Everyone, and welcome to the December 2nd Board of Trustees Meeting. Would everyone please stand? And we will be led by Justin Smith in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to your public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
This morning, we will be administering the oath of office to... Say it again? What did I say? Good morning. You see, we're off to a great start. You already know what this meeting is going to be like, so forgive me in advance. So I'm going to ask that we have first Kara Cronin to be sworn in for Village Trustee, and then Daryl Taylor as well. We've done this a couple of times now. I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear...
...that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States...
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States...
...the Constitution of the State of New York...
The Constitution of the State of New York...
...and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Village Trustee in Tuckahoe.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of Village Trustee in the Village of Tuckahoe.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, trustee. Daryl Taylor? Repeat after me. I, Daryl Taylor...
I, Daryl Taylor...
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...to uphold the Constitution of the United States...
...to uphold the Constitution of the United States...
...the Constitution of the State of New York...
...the Constitution of the State of New York...
...and I will faithfully discharge the duties of Village Trustee.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of Village Trustee.
...to the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, trustee. I will give some opportunities for the community to bring some remarks forward if you'd like. If there's anyone present that would like to offer some congratulations or any words of encouragement to the reappointed trustees. Anyone?
Lovely Billups, South High Street. You did it before, and you can do it again. I am so happy to have you here. Welcome you, and I am just confident that you will look out for this village in the way that you have before with this wonderful, wonderful body of knowledge. Knowledge? Okay. Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
Marking grades 100 Columbus. Congratulations to both of my colleagues. I am very proud of both of you, and I know you all will continue to do a terrific job in this neighborhood. God bless you and keep up the good work.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Nancy Height-Norday, the consulate. Congratulations. Looking forward to more progressive work for our village. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there anyone on Zoom? David? Okay. If you want to offer some words on Zoom, you can unmute and do so. Okay? Is there anyone on the board?
Yeah, I was going to say a few remarks during my opening, but congratulations, Daryl and Kara, on your overwhelming victory last month. I'm happy you're still here. And, yeah, it's difficult. I'm happy you're still here, and I'm happy we get to continue to work together.
Same here. Congratulations, Kara and Daryl. Congratulations.
Okay. Would either of you like to say something? You're welcome to now.
Thank you.
Trustee Taylor?
Thank you, ma'am.
Welcome back.
First, I would like to thank my wife, who is always supporting me, always behind me, as I'm always on the move, running around, doing what needs to be done. So I want to do that first. Also, I would like to thank all the residents of this village who came out and supported and voted for Deputy Mayor Kara Cronin and myself. We will gladly discharge the duties of a trustee for this wonderful village of Tuckahoe. And also, thank you to our Chair Julie Girdon and our Vice Chair Nancy Height-Norday, and everybody in our party, all of our volunteers. We do not take these seats lightly, and we are definitely happy to be back and ready to go to work and do what needs to be done for all the residents of Tuckahoe. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to thank the people of this village who thought it fit to put Daryl Taylor and I back in these seats to serve for another two years. It is both humbling and very exciting, and we just really appreciate all the support and the love that we've gotten over the course of the last few months. I could not do this without my family, who's here this evening, my husband Quinn, my son Zan, and my daughter Selene, who held the Bible for me today. Their support is unwavering, and while I'm sure they would wish that I am home more often, it is very nice to know that they are there for me all the time. And so I am so deeply grateful. I also really want to just say thank you to the other members of this board who've been incredibly supportive in all the initiatives that we've undertaken in the last couple of years. Again, this work for us is exciting, and it's invigorating, and we really love what we do here. I want to thank the villagers who came out to vote, for all the neighbors who have become friends and the friends who have become family. It is because of you that we do this, and we are just so grateful to be able to get to do this job. I want to take a moment to thank Mr. Vishy and Mr. Carnes for running. I know that's not easy, and putting yourself out there is an important thing, and it's part of the democratic process. And so I just want to bow a knot of thanks to them for running. And I think that's it. Yes, and of course, we want to thank trustee, a former trustee Engelbert, for all the work that she did, for being such an active part of this board. We're going to miss her, but we have great things to come. So I'm looking forward to another great two years.
Thank you. I want to thank the Taylor and the Cronin family, because I know that I personally pull them away from you, so I apologize in advance, because, and they never say no, to do the work for the village. So I appreciate that you guys are patient and understanding in the work that they do. So thank you so much. Thank you, Quinn, personally. So we get back to work. Congratulations, and now we're back to work. That's it. So I'm going to ask for a roll call. Camille?
Present.
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 Present. And today, it's our reorganization meeting, so we will be appointing people back into positions. So if you just bear with us for a little while, we have to do these appointments. I'm going to read all of them for the board's sake and ask for one motion for all of the appointments. I will leave Judge O'Toole for last, so that we can reappoint him, and then he'll be sworn in by Judge Fuller. So may I have a motion for the following appointments? Kara Cronin as Deputy Mayor, once again, for one year. David Burke as Village Administrator for one year. Camille DeSalvo for Receiver of Taxes for one year. Jackie Ferretti, who is here. Thank you, Jackie, for being present, for another year as Deputy Clerk. Michelle Licio as Assessor for one year. Gary Gertson, one year as Village Attorney. Nick Zanzano, Village Historian, for one year. The Eastchester Town Clerk/Register of Vital Statistics for a year. Sue Carpenter for a five-year term on the Planning Board. Antonio Leo, Chairperson for the Planning Board for one year. Don McCullen for a one-year term as Ad-Hoc Member of the Planning Board. Tom Ringwald as a member of the Zoning Board for five years, as well as one-year term as Board Chair. Eileen Piero for one year as a Zoning Board Ad-Hoc Member. Laura Rafiani for a three-year term as Sign and Auning, and as well as a one-year term as a Chairperson for Sign and Auning. Elaine Gary for a five-year term to the Library Board. Peggy Bellis for a five-year term on the Historic Preservation Commission, as well as one-year term for Jenny Steinhagen as Chairperson for the Historic Preservation Commission. May I please have a motion for these appointments?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And may I ask for a motion to reappoint Judge Michael O'Toole for a one-year term as Associate Village Justice in Tuckahoe?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And Judge Fuller, will you please swear in Michael O'Toole?
I do solemnly swear. I do solemnly swear... ...that I will faithfully execute... ...that I will faithfully execute... ...the Office of Associate Village Justice... ...the Office of Associate Village Justice... ...and will... ...and will... ...to the best of my ability... ...to the best of my ability... ...preserve, protect, and defend... ...preserve, protect, and defend... ...the Constitution of the United States... ...the Constitution of the United States... ...and the Constitution of the State of New York... ...and the Constitution of the State of New York... ...so help me God. So help me God. Congratulations.
I think he'd like the mic.
I'd just like to thank the mayor and the board for their continued trust in myself, doing the job of Associate Village Justice, you know, for the 34th appointment that I've had. Sounds like a sentence.
Kind of is.
Between Judge Fuller and I, we now have over 75 years, I believe, together as judges here in Tuckahoe. And that's quite a stretch. So thank you once again. I'd just like to note the presence of my wife here, who has supported me through all this time on the court. And we just moved, as a matter of fact. We sold our big old house on Henry Street. It became too big and too old. And we've moved, but not out of Tuckahoe. We're at the Tower Club now on Columbus Avenue. We're looking forward to a long stretch there. And I'd like to thank the people without whom we couldn't do our jobs as judges, and that's our staff, the clerks, Connie and Kara and Maureen, who has come back to help us out. Without them, we'd be lost. So thank you to the clerks, and I look forward to the next year.
Thank you, Judge. You know, as we reappointed everyone and reading off everyone's names, I really want to say a huge thank you to not just the employees, who are paid employees, but still, you know, give of themselves for this village in numerous ways, sometimes not necessarily, that's in their job description. They take great care and consideration to the residents, so thank you all. Jackie, who's here, who's like the face of Village Hall when you come here and takes a lot of smack from people and is still kind to them, and is still tries to help everyone. I really appreciate that about you. Thank you so much, Jackie. And Camille, thank you for your steadfast commitment to the work that you've been doing here for so long. We appreciate, you know, all of the staff. And I also want to say a special thank you to the volunteers. We have countless volunteers who give of their time, their talents, their knowledge, who have been doing it some for decades and don't ask for anything in return. They're not looking for accolades. They just want to serve their community, and I see how hard they work, and I really appreciate it. I don't take it for granted. So thank you to all of the volunteers. We will be having the annual Volunteer Holiday Dinner this week and next week, or the week after, for the employees and one for the volunteers. So we just, you know, some small tokens of appreciation go a long way, and we want you to know that we appreciate you. And I know that the rest of the board does too. So thank you all. So we're moving to public hearings, and we're going to keep the public hearing to consider the modifications to village code as it relates to short-term rentals. And I'm going to ask for a motion of minutes of the November 4th meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, board. And I'll ask everyone to please silence your phones if you haven't done so already. And this takes us to the first opportunity to address the board on any agenda items. If there's anyone in the room that would like to address the board on any agenda items? Anyone? Anyone on Zoom would like to address the board on any agenda items? Nope? Okay. So we'll move to resolutions. May I have a motion authorizing the readoption of the procurement policy on file with the village clerk, which is a policy that we've had. We just are renewing it every year. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, board. May I also have a motion to adopt the standard mileage reimbursement rate as set by the IRS at 67 cents, subject to change in January 2025?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? May I have a motion adopting the attached calendar of the Board of Trustee meetings for 2025, with regularly scheduled meetings on the first Monday of the month unless circumstances change?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And may I have a motion to adopt the designation of Webster Bank, J.P. Morgan Chase, and Wells Fargo Banks for the Village of Tuckahoe, where we do business?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And may I have a motion adopting the Eastchester Review as the official paper of the village?
So moved.
Second.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And someone did ask me a question about adopting the newspaper and the bank. These are just, the board has to approve any entity that we do business with. So for the banks, these are the banks that we use. And for the newspapers, this is where we have to notice meetings and make sure that the public is aware of any public meetings. Going to Resolution Number 6, authorizing an MOU, Memorandum of Understanding with Westchester County for Remote Access to the County Clerk's Westchester Records Online.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, board. May I have a motion authorizing free short-term parking in the business districts of the village to encourage local shopping during the holidays from Saturday, December 21st through December 25th? This should make people happy.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I doubt. Any abstentions? All right, Tuckahoe, go shopping and eating. May I have a motion authorizing the village to send a letter of support to the Governor and the New York State Legislature to commit to and continue the additional $50 million in unrestricted state aid for 2025 to 2026, state budget and beyond?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And we will continue asking for the money that we deserve. And we have to pay bills, so may I have a motion for approval of vouchers in the amount of $645,885.12.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, board. May I have departmental reports now, starting with Chief Larry Rota, the Police Department?
Good evening and congratulations, trustee Taylor and trustee Cronin. I hope everyone had a good holiday and good time spent with the family. December 1st, we started changing our winter parking regulations. So December 1st, from 3:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m., there's no parking, excuse me, in the business district. Pretty much anywhere there's meters, you cannot park between 3:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m., and this is to facilitate snow removal and winter parking. Also, we started flipping the alternate side of the streets parking signs, so you'll see them flipped over. And in the areas where there's snow zones, there's typical streets for snow zones, we've been starting to put those up. Just a reminder, the snow zones, the snow zone goes into effect upon the snow starting, and it goes through 12 hours after it stops. I wanted to wish everyone a happy holiday season. Anyone who's driven through the village lately is seeing at night it's hustling and bustling with our restaurant scene here, and it's great to see a lot of people out and about. So I just want everyone to drive careful, come enjoy the Village of Tuckahoe, see what we have to offer, but just know that, take traffic seriously, drive slow, and watch for pedestrians. The crime tip of the month this month is going to be for big ticket. I always look directly to where Nicole used to sit.
She's watching, I'm sure.
Big-ticket items such as cell phones and electronics require a signature when it gets delivered to your home. Time and time again, this time of the year, we have the porch pirates that go around to take packages, and it seems that everyone seems to be shopping online these days. Specifically, though, they're looking for iPhones and large-ticket items. So if you can, make sure it's a signature delivery or deliver it to your place of work or someone that's going to be home. Don't leave it on the front doorstep. Apparently, you can still do that. And one last tip is, again, today is Cyber Monday, so it's a perfect time, anyone after this meeting, to go on and maybe buy some smart switches and bulbs to, you know, automate your house. It's pretty easy to do, and it really goes a long way, and it's so inexpensive. So with that, I don't have anything else, and I want to wish everyone a happy holiday season.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
DPW Superintendent wasn't feeling well, so we'll go to the library. Swadish Pashnanda, the Director?
Good evening, everyone. Congratulations, Kara and Daryl. Just as you know, the library, we had a soft opening on November 6th. So if you haven't visited our new library, please come and visit. The library will be closing at 2:00 p.m. on Tuesday, December 24th, and 3:00 p.m. on Tuesday, December 31st. And we will be closed on December 25th and January 1st. As you know, some are a special program. We have book clubs, mystery book club, regular book club, and we are having holiday special books and tea. Charles Dickens, A Christmas Carol, on Wednesday, December 11th at 6:30 p.m. So please come and join us. Elaine Provenzano is going to explore Dickens' classic holiday tale and learn why it is still beloved by readers for over 180 years. And our ongoing program, Tai Chi Meditation, Chair Yoga, Mahjong, ESL classes, and art classes are still very popular. So some of our programs are still going on at the community center, so please check the calendar, and especially some of the children's program and yoga program. And for children, we have special pre-K yoga with Buddha Buddha, which is going to be on Thursday, December 5th at 11:00 a.m., ages 2 and 1/2 to 5 years. Graphic Novel Book Club in the library, Friday, December 6th, at 4:00 p.m. for grades 3rd to 5th. Legos in the library. We have our regular storytime sing-along. We have a special holiday storytime with Mayor Andy Noe and Ms. Nora in the community center on Tuesday, December 17th at 11:00 a.m. And musical storytime. All of these programs are still going on, so please come and visit us if you haven't been. So, and also, I want to wish everyone a very happy holiday season.
Happy holidays. Thank you very much. Camille? Okay, she said taxes are due December 31st. I hate to be the bearer of this news. Somebody should give her a mic. Taxes are due December 31st. There was a little glitch with payments online, but that's resolved now. Okay, great. So our attorney will take the oath book to get everyone to sign at your meetings, your respective meetings. So thank you. Thank you, Camille. Gary?
I know we discussed this at the work session. The county's instituted a program. We all know about the red light tickets that people get to the registered owner of the car. They're going to do this with school buses now. So each school bus will have a camera on their little arm, and if your car passes that school bus, there'll be a ticket issued to that vehicle. Also, if you're driving, you pass a school bus, you get pulled over, and you're convicted. It's an eight-point violation now, up from five points, which makes complete sense. So that is a tremendous violation. It's going to cost a fortune. So, goes without saying, don't pass a school bus.
David? Give us a few updates.
Just want to say congratulations to trustee Cronin and trustee Taylor. Looking forward to continuing to work and working with you again in the new year. As the mayor stated, Mr. DeMarco was not here, and he was adamant that he wanted me to wish everyone a happy holiday season and healthy holiday season. That's from me, too. And I'm just going to say a thank you over the last week of our DPW guys. When I talk about the sun goes down early around here, and just the lights look absolutely fantastic on Main Street and Crestwood, and we get so many compliments, and they just do a really good job. So just to thank you for all that hard work over the last couple of weeks.
Thank you. Okay. That will take us to some, what is on the agenda, says miscellaneous, but there's nothing miscellaneous about these orders of business. So the Comprehensive Plan Public Forum will be held this Wednesday, December 4th, from 7:00 to 9:00 at the community center. I'm asking that, you know, residents, please, please come out. I would love to see a packed house so that everyone can weigh in on what they want for the future of their community. It's very important that we try to get there if we can. And we also have Tuckahoe Winter Fest, Saturday, December 7th, from 3:00 to 8:00 at Depot Square. So please come out and have some fun on December 7th. And that will take us to, oh, we also have a village board work session. Somebody asked me if we could make sure that we had on our agendas when the work sessions were, because people were getting confused, depending on the number of weeks in a month. So we will do that moving forward. So the village board work session will be held on January 2nd at 7:00 p.m., and the village board meeting will be on January 6th at 7:00 p.m. So please join us, for either one or both. And that will take us to Board of Trustee member reports, and we'll start with trustee Lang.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things here. So start with beautification. 100 double-sided wreaths and velvet bows have been hung on the decorative poles. The bridges and clocks have been decorated with fresh roping and lights. They all look lovely, just like David mentioned. In the early part of 2025, a fundraising letter will be mailed out to the residents and businesses. Your support is greatly appreciated. And as the mayor just mentioned, Winter Fest begins approximately 3:00 p.m. on Saturday, the 7th. There'll be train rides, face painting, pictures with Santa. Also, our tree lighting will be at 5:00 p.m., and the menorah lighting will be at 6:00 p.m. And I just want to wish all of our residents a happy holiday season. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Trustee Gachion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to congratulate trustee Taylor and Deputy Mayor Cronin once again on their victory. So, we'll start with the History Committee. History Committee is in the beta stages of their website, their new website, which will be presented to the board for approval in the new year. The Echoes of History Research and Video Project continues. It's a collaboration with local students to highlight the historic sites along Route 22. And they had three hot posts on their social media this month, including Veterans Mickey O'Toole and Mike Invito Pinto and Margaret Giacapelli recounting the first time she voted in Tuckahoe. But I am thinking, I wish Nick was here today for reappointment, that we should get them on TikTok. It'd be nice to see some trends, some suspect has trends or we listen but we don't judge trends. So, I'll work on that with them.
Sounds fun.
Move on to veterans. On November 11th, Eastchester Veterans hosted a tribute to the USO at Lake Isle. Thank you to everyone who came out. It was a nice event. And we also cosponsored an event on November 20th. We partnered with the Royal Regency Hotel on Tuckahoe Road. We had over a hundred and twenty veterans and supporters there who registered. And I think a bunch of folks who kind of slipped in, which was nice. And I wanna thank the folks on the board who came out and supported that. Our hope is to make it bigger and better next year. So, thank you again to those who came out and to our partner, the Royal Regency. And Madam Mayor, I know a couple of folks have mentioned that it's getting colder. So, with your permission, I'll leave us with a little Japanese proverb.
Please do. We could use some proverbs.
One kind word can warm three months of winter. But then George Herbert said, "Every mile is two miles in the winter." So, bundle up out there. Happy holidays, Tuckahoe.
Thank you, Trustee Gachion. I will live by those words. Trustee Taylor?
I don't have a report, but I'd just like to say, happy holidays to everybody. And just be safe. The village does look beautiful as usual. The DPW always does an awesome, awesome job of making the Main Street and Crestwood and Depot Square look really, really nice this time of year. So, happy holidays to everyone. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Cronin, welcome back.
Hi, everyone again. The planning board is adjourned this month, but the zoning board will meet next week on the 11th, I believe, that the work session's at 6:45 and then the regular meetings at 7:30. There are really just two items on the agenda is 174 Marbledale Road is back for, they are requesting to turn some square footage into residential units from commercial. And then 18 Fairview is a conversion of an attic space to livable space. I just wanna piggyback on the mayor's mention of the Comprehensive Plan Meeting. The forum is on Wednesday and it really is important for everyone to attend. In addition, there is a survey. So, if for some reason you cannot come on Wednesday, you can let your voice be heard in this survey. It's really, I believe it's twenty questions. It takes about eight minutes to complete. You can do it really quickly. We have paper copies. If you feel more comfortable doing that, I can bring you a paper copy if you need one. But they're available on the village website. I have them on our social media. They're really available anywhere. And you can do them even at the forum if you haven't done it yet. So, please make every effort to come to the forum if you're able. And if you can't, or even if you can, also, please make every effort to complete that survey because your voice really is very important to us. The seniors are having their holiday luncheon on Wednesday, December 11th at Wykik Hill Golf Club. I believe that is seventy-five dollars for non-members. Former, the former director of the seniors and the current director both work, both organize a program called Secret Santa, which is an organization that raises money and does a toy drive for children in need. They have their annual benefit at Lake Isle this Saturday for seventy-five dollars. If you're interested, I can get you that information. Our own DPW every year organizes a toy drive. Those toys go to local families that are in need. So, if you have it in your heart, please just stop by DPW and drop off unwrapped toys. They can be for boys, girls, unisex, of any age. They need them for young children, but they also need things for older children too because that's actually much harder to source. And then, I believe that's it.
That's great.
Thank you. Have a happy holiday and enjoy. Yeah.
I wanna thank, he left, but I wanna thank Justin Smith, the young man who came and led us in the pledge of allegiance. No matter whenever we ask him to volunteer and participate, you know, a lot of young people are busy doing what young people do. But he never says no. So, I really wanted to acknowledge him and say thank you to him. And I wanna wish everyone a happy holiday, Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, and Happy Hanukkah for those who celebrate the holidays. I know that the holidays are also very difficult for many. If you've lost loved ones or if you're going through difficult times and you feel like you really can't celebrate the holidays the way you think. It's not about presents. Really try to find time with family and with loved ones and with friends and reconnect, you know, bridge gaps. Build bridges with people who maybe you have fallen out with. And use this as an opportunity to mend relationships that may be severed. I've had a few conversations with some residents who are, you know, having a difficult time in the holidays. So, I just want you to all to know that I'm keeping you definitely in my thoughts and my prayers, Tuckahoe. And I just ask you for, to look for those moments that bring you joy, which is really usually with loved ones and with family. So, have a great holiday. And that will take us to the second opportunity to address the board. So, if we have anyone who's in the room who would like to address the board, please raise your hand. Yep.
Good evening, everyone. Anthony Fiori, Thibodin Place, Tuckahoe. First want to say congratulations, Deputy Mayor Cronin, Trustee Taylor.
Thank you.
Just to remind all the residents, next week, December 10th, is the Fire Commissioner's election. It's from 2 to 9:00 PM. Tuckahoe residents will go to the community center. Anybody in Bronxville listening will go to Bronxville Village Hall. Anybody in Eastchester will go to, they have two locations, depending on where you live. Is Eastchester Library or the VFW Post? It's 2 to 9. Everybody come out, get your friends. It's a three-way this time. So, everybody get out there if you want any applications or absentee ballots or finding your location. Go to eastchesternewyorkfd.gov. All the information is there. Everything's needed. Everyone else have a nice holiday. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Bob Foyce? Last time I was here, I was looking forward to thanking the trustees for saving the wardhouse. We hope. And I just was wondering if there's a report on the wardhouse at the moment as far as what the status of the cases?
Yeah. No, there is no report because we're in the middle of litigation. So, we really can't get into the details of what's happening with the wardhouse.
No one on this, on these trustees should be speaking about this case at all?
Correct.
That's clear. Okay. I mean, I hope that's clear to everybody. What can we as citizens do in the meantime to help?
I'm not so sure that... Gary, is there anything that anyone should be doing?
No, not really. Just, you know, again, we're in litigation now. So, really, it's not good to comment on it.
We can't, right. We can't offer you any advice as to what to do.
If you, you know, you're a citizen, think of something and try it.
Well, yeah. I just hope, I would hope that the village and the town and the county has a strategy, just in case there's any preliminary period legally, to make sure that there isn't an abrupt bulldozing of the house. That's the first guttural concern I have, that at least you're ready for that. Because stranger things have happened. And it would be, it would be very embarrassing if, in fact, the village would be more than capable of winning on appeal and any reticence would allow the developer to actually knock it down in the meantime. I think that would be a tragedy. I think that would be awful. So, just, you know, I would hope that you're sitting down and talking about that. Because at least, I mean, I'm not gonna express an opinion as far as where the case will go, but, you know, that you're at least approaching it as positively as possible. You know, throw water on something that might have a possibility. We should be possibility thinkers. I mean, and...
So, Mr. Foyce, I appreciate your comments and your feedback. I will say this, this much. I won't get into the litigation. I will say that this board has done more than any other person in this village to try to quote-unquote "save" the wardhouse and to preserve its historic, you know, meaning.
I understand. I just think...
So, no, let me finish. So, you know, it almost comes across as a little bit accusatory, like, are you doing as much as you can? Are you...
No, I'm just, I'm just...
So, let me just finish. So, we started, my first order of business as mayor was to pass Historic Preservation Law, the first ever in Tuckahoe. It could have been done by a million other boards, but it wasn't. So, here we are. After that, we designated a Historic Preservation Commission to, you know, so we've done all the things to try our best to preserve Tuckahoe's history.
Oh, I understand that.
And we're continuing to do that to the best of our ability. So, that's the most that I can say about that.
Please, if there's an opportunity where the citizens can be heard or take some additional action to help you out, please let us know. That's all I'm saying. I think that would be fair enough. You know, we're dealing, and I'm not speaking to the board, about the board when I say this, but a number of us who've been very active with the Friends of the Wardhouse, and I'm a bit of a latecomer to it, have witnessed some of the underhanded things that have gone on around you. And I'm not blaming the board. You've done what you had to do. But we know underhanded, sneaky things have happened. So, all I'm saying is guard yourself from any further underhanded, sneaky things happening. That's all.
Yeah.
That's a fair thing to ask. Not to get defensive, okay? Believe me. I mean, some of you know personally some of my feelings about some of the individuals who have scrutinized you. And I have my feelings about some of the scrutiny that's come from the board too. But I'm not bringing that up right now.
Please don't call out from the audience. So, we hear you. We appreciate your comments. And we will definitely take them to heart.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? Is there anyone on Zoom? No one? I wanna go back to the survey for the Comprehensive Plan Meeting. I just wanna say, if there's anyone that's listening that needs help even completing it and you're not sure how to get that help, feel free to call Village Hall. And I'm sure Jackie will be very happy to either help you or take your number. And any one of us could even come out. This board is very willing to come out and help if you need a paper one and need us to help you. Feel free to call Village Hall and we will assist you if you have feedback or wanna weigh in on the comprehensive planning process. Okay? And we appreciate everyone's feedback. Mr. Foyce, we appreciate your feedback. And definitely, we will, on Wednesday, hopefully, we will see a packed room at the community center so that we can talk about the future of the village and what the residents would like to see. And I think your input is going to be very important in the direction that the village goes. Yes. One more?
Is it gonna be videotaped?
Yes, it is. Okay. Deputy Mayor has one more thing.
I apologize for forgetting this earlier. I wanna acknowledge the passing of Anne Marie Chiaramella, who served on our zoning board for a longtime chair of our zoning board, who saw the village through the process of the hotel rezoning. So, I happen to be reading her obituary and I just, I feel such akin to her in so many ways because this is a person who grew up in the Bronx and moved to Tuckahoe and established her family here and went to school for teaching and worked with high-needs children and served her community very well and had an interest in planning and zoning. And this is somebody I never got to meet, but I would actually really have liked to because I think I would have had a lot in common with her. And so, just on behalf of the village, we'd like to just acknowledge her passing and send our condolences to her family. And we also had the passing of Eugene Jean Alfred Rizzo, who was a longtime resident. And I just wanted to acknowledge that also. So, thank you.
Yeah, our condolences to the families. So, unless there's any other business, anyone on the board have anything else that we may have forgotten? Okay, then we will adjourn the meeting. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
And we wish you all a very happy and safe and healthy holiday, Tuckahoe. Have a good night. We'll see you in, hopefully, at Tuckahoe Fest and on Wednesday at the Comprehensive Planning Meeting. Good night.